Okay. Hello, everybody. My name is Veronica Ramos and I am here with Moms on Board. We're having a candidate forum today with all the city council candidates for District One. Thank you again to all the candidates for being here. We really appreciate you coming and giving some of your time to get, to show us who you are and for us to get to know you a little bit better. So I'm gonna go ahead and start. We're going to just let everybody introduce themselves and we're gonna first start with Mr. Brian Kennedy.
Thank you. My name is Brian Kennedy and I'm running for district one city council representative. I'm running because I just couldn't take it anymore. I mean, I'm a voter too and I'm tired of broken promises and lies and sellouts. The property tax increases are driven by runaway spending. We have a bloated $1 billion budget that gets a rubber stamp approval after about two days review. We have a billion dollars in debt which doesn't include the interest, which by the time you add that in, it's a little over 2 billion. There's 400 million getting ready to come our way. That's already been approved. And we have the second highest property taxes of the 50 largest cities. Our growth has stopped or slowed and people are fleeing high property taxes. Between my wife and I, we have six children. One is in El Paso. The rest have chosen to leave and we're trying to get them back. First time homeowners are shut out. Ask an apartment, it looks like dimmer and dimmer as prices go though. The economic impacts, we try to attract out of town companies think again. Then there's certificates of obligation, commit taxpayer dollars without approval. It's a general willingness to commit our tax dollars for projects that may or may not pan out or may or may not have a real effect on the average person in El Paso. And that's not what I consider moving forward. What I consider moving forward is having good fiscal responsibility. So we have money for the projects we need. We have money for the things that we want for our families. We have money for parks because we were good stewards of the budget in other areas. Course correction requires an open inquiry, honest action, smarter spending and more conscientious management review. City manager has forgotten. He does not, he does not run city council. He works for city council. And people sometimes forget that on city council. He is an employee and needs to be held accountable. We need to make the vigilance to make the dozens of small business decisions that add up. And finally, start seeking opportunities to diversify and expand the revenue, which you can't do unless you can get a grip on property taxes. I know we can do better. And I'm willing to ask the tough questions. I'm willing to give the tough answers. A lot of people want the job and I feel like I am the best prepared candidate to do the job in these tough times.
Thank you again, Mr. Kennedy for being here. We're gonna go ahead and let Ms. Annalisa Silverstein introduce herself and tell us a little bit why she's running for this candidacy.
Hello, my name's Annalisa Cordova Silverstein and I am a candidate for District One. I'm a fourth generation El Pasoan and I've learned about community service and hard work from my parents and my grandparents. When I was little, my grandmother would take me to different political rallies and we would help get Latinas and Mexican Americans elected into office. My father was our neighborhood association president. And so that's where I learned a lot about our city amenities. I grew up in a wonderful neighborhood memorial park where we had a library, a tennis court, a pool and a beautiful park all run by the city. And I would attend neighborhood association meetings with him. And that's where I learned what our city representative does and what it takes to be a good representative. I have been involved in the community. I started when I was in UTEP. I started Students Against the Sarko and we led the efforts to fight a Sarko. I also worked for State Senator Elliot Shapley and worked my way from intern to chief of staff. And we took on all the hard issues and one of my main jobs was writing policy and working with our constituents and we helped every single constituents with every single case that we had until it was finished. And so I have that experience of running an office, writing legislation and most importantly being available. After that, I worked for two nonprofits. I worked for Loretto Academy, wrote grants for STEM and scholarships and then I worked at the El Paso Zoological Society. And that's where I really got to learn things at the city level. And we fundraised money for animal conservation and also for family events and quality of life. Then I, for the last six years, I've been the project manager for Hello amigo. What I want to do is make sure that we are making our taxes affordable for families that we serve. I also want to make sure that we are funding our police and our firefighters and also have safe parks and trails and open spaces for family. I want to keep the economic momentum of this community going. I started my campaign on April 26th and we had a Dia de los Niños event. And we asked families what they wanted to see and what we heard is they want more services for District One. I'm gonna be a full-time city representative and I want to make sure that I'm accessible and available for everyone and I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silverstein, for being here with us and thank you for introducing yourself. We're gonna go ahead and go on with Ms. Delarice Montanez-Verias.
Well, good morning, everybody. This is Delarice Montanez-Verias and I go by DMB. Many of you remember me from the primaries because I run for Texas Congressional District 16. I am originally from Puerto Rico, but I have been in El Paso, Texas for over 22 years. I was a law enforcement officer for 26 as detention officer, deputy sheriff, police officer. And I ended my law enforcement career as a border patrol agent in El Paso Station. So I was actually a veteran of 29 years as well as a joint multinational logistician overseas in the United States. So why you, you asked me, why do I, why did I decided to run for city council? Well, I tell you, I am sick and tired, fed up and exhausted of the corruption that's going on in our city. I am sick and tired of politicians on both political parties taking excessive amount of funding to their campaigns. The campaigns should, the voters should be the only ones deciding who the next representative is gonna be. I am all for transparency. I am all for justice. I am all for accountability. It doesn't matter who it is. It doesn't matter if it's an attorney, if it's a lawyer, it doesn't matter if it's somebody in Congress or even if it's the president of the United States. And I have proven that over and over through all my careers. And if you do not believe me, again, I am all for transparency. You can go to my DMB or social media, go to the Twitter, go to the Facebook, go to the Instagram and go to the TikTok. Some of the things that matter to me in our community are obviously the quality of life, especially the mental health crisis that happening in our community, not just our first responders and veterans, but our community as a whole. I want to make our community a little bit more appealing to the outside community actually moving to El Paso. Property taxes is just ridiculous and you don't see it because it's hidden on our electric bills, our water bills, our gas bills. And you know, we have to held our city council accountable. City manager works for city council. City council doesn't work for city manager. And you know, I know that that's a killer if I want to get into politics into the city, but I'm going to be transparent. And I just want the voters to educate themselves with every single candidate. Don't pay attention to the TV ads. Don't pay attention to the radio ads. You know, nice political marketing. I have learned so much on this, both of my campaigns. That is ridiculous. Get to know your constituents and if you're eligible to vote, I beg you to vote. I am your best representative, but I'll let you decide.
Thank you, Ms. DMB. Thank you for being here with us again and we're gonna go ahead and allow Ms. Lauren Ferris to introduce herself.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Lauren Ferris. Thank you for being in attendance and having us speak here. So a little bit about myself, I am currently a private lawyer. However, I going back, I graduated from UTEP magna cum laude and with political science and a minor in criminal justice. I then went on to the University of Arkansas Little Rock Law School. While I was in law school and at UTEP as highly involved in student organizations as well as part of being, being a part of the band. But while I was in law school, I was the vice president of the Student Bar Association, treasurer of the Hispanic Law Students Association, vice president of the Arkansas Association of Women Lawyers and so on. So I've been involved for many, many years. My grandparents immigrated from Lebanon and when they came over, they instilled in us a high work ethic and value giving back to the community. And so starting from when I was a young age, I volunteer with my grandfather with the Lions Club doing senior citizen events, providing food to, food to those in need. I'm also highly involved with my church. I am the humanitarian coordinator for the Antiochian Board of Women for the entire North America as well as sitting as vice president for the local ladies societies, which we work closely with, excuse me, many nonprofits here as well as doing prison ministry. So I've been involved in the community for almost my entire life. I have a passion to serve and to represent the people. I, going, going back, I became an attorney, returned back to El Paso and started working for Wayne Wright doing social security disability law. I then became an assistant city attorney for about seven years and ended up becoming a municipal court judge. So I have the background experience working for the city. I worked doing transactional work with multiple departments, a lot of the quality of life departments as well as writing resolutions, ordinances and the like for almost seven years. And so I come with a different perspective, seeing how the city operates from behind the scenes. I'm running because I'm tired of nothing being changed. We have the same special interest groups. We have the same donors, the same people that have been running city council and it's affecting our pockets. People are moving out of El Paso because of high property tax rate. We can't get new people to come because of that. And I want to see that we have somebody truly representing the best interests of El Pasoans, not just people that come from big money or someone, you know, we need someone there that can be relatable. I have children myself. I use the parks. I use the public amenities. I use our transportation. I ride on our, I drive on our roads. So there's a lot of improvement we need to see happen and nothing has been changed. And I want to make that change. I have been the voice for many years, working with public service, advocating for others and I want to be here for my constituents and make El Paso as great as it can be.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Ferris. Thank you so much for being with us. And then last but not least, we have Ms. Erin Tagg and she's gonna introduce herself and tell us a little bit about why she's running.
Thank you so very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here today. So my name is Erin Tagg and I am running for El Paso City Council District One. I am a child of God, a daughter, a sister, a wife, a mother and a stepmother. I'm an Army veteran and I like to say that I'm a proud adopted Texan and El Pasoan. I'm originally from Washington State. I was stationed here at Fort Bliss in 2009 and very, very soon after I met the love of my life and I became a Texan and El Pasoan in 2010. Right before we got married. So I have been here since and made El Paso my permanent home. Currently, I work as a project manager and is for a startup company. I previously worked for ADP here in El Paso where I got my experience as a project manager and made that transition from military to civilian, civilian life. I am running because I believe in stepping up and taking action when there is a need and there is most certainly a need here. I believe in the LIFT principles of limited government, individual liberty, free enterprise and timeless truths. And I think that our city has gotten away from all of those. As, as a former Army intelligence officer, I understand the, the obligation and the duty that comes with being a leader. And I also, as a project manager, understand how to utilize time and resources efficiently and to collaborate with people, not only within the team, but with people outside of the team. So not only my fellow city counselors, future city counselors, but also working with the state, working with nonprofits to move our city forward. As a wife and a mom, I understand the urgency to secure our blessings of liberty to the next generation. 58% of Americans, this is from an NBC poll that came out a couple of weeks ago, 58% of Americans say that our country's best days are behind us. And I mean, that's, that's incredible. How crazy is that? That over half of the people have no hope for the future. And we need to change that and there is still hope. And I want to be a part of making an impact and giving a good future to our children because our children and our city is worth fighting for.
Thank you, Mrs. Tagg, for being with us. We're gonna go ahead and ask a question to our candidates. We're gonna go ahead and start with, let me get the list. We're gonna start with Ms. Lauren Ferris. Sorry. If elected, what specific efforts will you make to increase family-friendly amenities in El Paso? And are there any current efforts that you support that, that impact the availability of family-friendly amenities?
Thank you. So to start off with, I will say that I am a donor. I have donated to the Moms on Board fund for the all amenities playground that you all have up and coming. So I'm very much in favor of pushing amenities such as that. We need those. I know it's gonna be at Ascate. We need more parks that are accessible to individuals with disabilities around the entire city, not just my district, but this is an entire city issue. And so I would work with you all, you know firsthand what it takes to have these amenities. And so I would like to see that implemented in many of our parks to have it accessible. And so I, I'm an advocate for that. I want to see additional lighting and shade structures at our parks. Again, we do need to be conscious though of our budget and working, where can we work to make sure that's incorporated part of our essential needs with the public, family-friendly amenities. I have children myself and so I, and I also play sports utilizing our parks. So I know the importance of having these amenities and I would work with whatever stakeholders involved to get input, see what we can do to bring additional family amenities to the community. You're on mute.
I'm so sorry. Thank you, Mrs. Ferris. So we're gonna go ahead and ask Mrs. Tagg the same question. If elected, what specific efforts will you make to increase family-friendly amenities in El Paso? And are there any current efforts that you support that impact the availability of family-friendly activities in El Paso?
Thank you very much. So I would certainly want to examine the budget. I think that with the top concern being property taxes and the, I would say, artificial increase of property valuation that is then increasing taxes. I think that we really have to take into consideration, what are we willing to sacrifice? I think that what we have right now, we need to begin taking better care of. You know, I, I've seen articles about how kids these days are, they're bored. And there's been issues with setting park bathrooms on fire. So we really need to get our youth engaged. We can't just have a park sitting there. There has to be something in order to keep the youth involved in ways that are positive. So I would advocate for working within the community to organize a program that would help our youth in that respect. But my big concern is what new things can we do? Given our budget, I would want to take care of what we have, improve upon those and maybe work with our members of the community and say, you know, don't ask what your city can do for you. Ask what you can do for your city. If you want to see this, how can you help make it happen? And of course, as a city representative, I would be there to advocate for you and help with that. But again, the budget is my biggest concern. And so I really would have a hard time adding or building out or stretching the budget even more for, for new things. As far as what I have contributed, I do use the parks. I do volunteer with a nonprofit organization that is out at several community events almost every other weekend. And I, I do think that as a members of the community, we can do better to help improve our parks and improve family-friendly opportunities without having to depend on city and taxpayer money.
Thank you so much. We're gonna go ahead with Mr. Kennedy. Would you like me to re, re-ask the question?
No, that's okay.
Thank you.
That's okay. This is, this is ultimately a question for all the areas of town, but specifically in District One. I mean, if you go up by Coronado High School, there's a public-private partnership for some athletic fields that are up there. They're doing very well. And I think that that can be a plan. I was up there the other day. We were talking about ways to make it better. And that's a plan that can be also used for some of the other parks. I think two of the things I, I hear most frequently about parks obviously is lighting, which is an issue, restrooms is an issue. And the third thing is kind of an overview, which is when there are amenities built, trying to protect them. That doesn't necessarily take a high dollar with, very honestly, with lighting and cameras in those locations in the evenings and a willingness to say, we're not going to allow those things that we have built to be destroyed and we will take action on it. You can probably keep them safe. I do have a concern about, about choosing some things that may drain more money out of the budget. So it can't go other places because budget is obviously a finite number. The water parks this year will lose about three and a half million dollars. And the question is, what could you do in some of the parks with that money? And I think that we need to sit down and take a look and say, in a hit list, here is what we need. Are we gonna do lighting? Okay, then let's work with lighting. Let's look at some private partnerships. And the PPPs, the public-private partnerships, which I've helped design in various industries can be a real benefit for something like this. And I think we need to take a look at doing that. Have I helped? There's a lot of sports out there, teams out there that have worn t-shirts with my name on it or my law firm's name on it because we help sponsor them because giving the youth something to do. And a good example is when I ran the Coliseum, we ran the ice rink and we had free field trips for every fifth grader in El Paso. Because we gave them something to do that was good and healthy and gave them some activity and it cost them nothing. Those are the type of programs I think we need to replicate all over District One and all over the city of El Paso.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. We're gonna go on with Ms. Delarice.
Okay, so as you guys know, I don't have any kids. I have been married to my career my entire life. But I do have a nonprofit organization called Dance for Drinks in, registering the state of Texas. And what we do, we do dancing events for children that are involved in sport event competitions. So we do scholarships for those children. I have reached out to the Young Democrats in El Paso. I have reached out to Blanca Trout and Sergio Coronado working for Commissioner Number Four regarding the nonprofit and actually the business that I have, which is the Christian Holistic Retreat Get Away for Those Who Serve. And I can tell you, there was no more pleasure that I have had in the last month that assisting the fire department from our community and our police department and bringing the horses for the children to be able to see them. I agree with the comments about the parks. The parks are amazing, but the people are not using it. Why is it? Is it because of the trees? There's not much shade because it's really hot in El Paso? Is it because the equipment that's in the parks is too hot for the children? It causes burn. You know, those things we have to look into. Whenever I was in the military, I was actually in charge of the MWR for all the redeployments, redeployments and the mobilization, not just for the army, but for the service members. And I did that for the entire two years. And it was amazing what we did for our community. I am a logistic, a logistician by trade and that's exactly what we do. We do and work on planning and as a team. I am part of the El Paso Downtown Lions Club. We have done a lot, we have planted a lot of trees in Ascate and we actually have a memorial in where we have, you know, a rock for the organization. So I'm heavily involved with the children and our future generation is the future of the United States.
Thank you, Ms. Delarice. And then so we're gonna go on to the next question. Thank you.
Oh wait, I haven't answered.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, Ms. I'm sorry. I missed Ms. Annalisa Silverstein.
So it was during the pandemic when I, when the only things we could really do were go to our parks and go to our trails and our open spaces for like our mental health for the community. And that's when I started noticing the improvements that had to take place. It was really incredible to have this organization go to city council and request things like shading and restrooms at the parks. And so that input from Moms on Board is what they put into Proposition B, which will be on the ballot. And also I noticed that there will be an all-accessible park, a city one as in addition to the county one that is on there. So that's really great. What we need to do also is hold our developers accountable when they're building the parks within their developments. They also, we should have higher standards. We should make sure that there is a shade already when they're developing the parks because of our weather and our, you know, to make it safe for the kids. I've been going around, block walking. We've talked to over 20,000 voters and have gone into all the neighborhoods. And I was in a new development that's only been there for a year and again, it did not have a shade. So then after that, then it becomes, you know, a city issue. So we need to make sure we're holding them accountable. And I worked at the zoo and so there are things and then the additions and I fundraised for all the private, well, for most of the private projects there that and saw how we can have private-public partnerships all across the city. Another thing we need to look at is the timing of when the parks are open. So often when it's dark, let's say nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, that's when we see things happen or people that are not using the parks in the way they should. You know, we need to make sure that we, we make them safe for the neighborhoods around them too. Oh, you're on mute again.
Thank you so much, Ms. Silverstein. I'm so sorry. So we're gonna go ahead and give you the, the next question. What are the current challenges facing education, school and university?
Well, I know as city council, we don't really vote on any of these things, but what we should do is we should be working in partnership with our schools as a tax entity. So you know, we should be able to make sure our city services are getting to the parents such as our live active programs or our mental health programs. So there are some ways there that we can partner with the school districts so that way they know about all of the different city services that are available to our families. As far as universities, we need to have a better partnership with our, like a feeder program from our schools to our universities to our small businesses and making sure that we're keeping our talent here locally. This is something that our business has done. Hello amigo. I mean, we're a small business of eight and we've made sure to volunteer and talk about computer science and tech jobs in the schools. And I mean, there's some great programs sponsored by Microsoft Teles that we're so lucky to have in this community. And then we also go to the colleges to recruit and we hire local and we hire our local talent. And even though we're a remote company, we want to make sure that we're providing jobs. And if we can do it as a small business, I mean, all businesses should be able to do this to keep our talent here or recruit also our, our expats back home, which I've worked on in progress through 21. I was the chair of El Paso Everywhere where we let our expats know, hey, you can move your company back here and you can hire local, you can give back to our community. And we've already seen at least three companies, one tech just announced last week that they're gonna move back home. And so that's what we need to do more at the city level. And so that's what we need to do more at the city level.
Thank you, Mrs. Silverstein. So we're gonna go on with Mr. Kennedy. Um, so what, what are some of the, uh, challenges that our city is facing with education, schools and university?
Well, I have an unusual view. I was raised in a, a teacher's home and, uh, my dad was a teacher and then was an elementary school principal. And I went to law school at 59 years old. So lifelong learning is pretty important to me. I graduated at 62. Um, one of the things I was gonna say is that when you start looking at schools and yes, city council itself doesn't have control over the schools, but they do have control over a couple of things. Um, I was one of the first that we could find city council, um, candidates that actually. Had meetings with candidates that were running for County Commissioners Court and current school board members. Because we do have to work together. These are many taxing entities. And with a better coordination, we can do that. The city right now has a program. Where they are able to, um, look at a business that wants to come in and say, what skill sets do you need for us to get for you? And then go to both the Community College and UTEP. And say, okay, can we, do you have a program that can give us these, these skill sets? And if not, what do we have to do to modify it? So having that initial conversation with the businesses that are coming into town, the large businesses that are coming into town. And so you don't have to bring out of town skill set in, you can get it right here in El Paso. But that's a program that's already in place and needs to be enhanced. Needs to be expanded where we have a better communication. And I do think that the communication with all of them, with all the taxing entities is really important. I mean, people who want their kids educated and want to be able to afford them to go to college or to go to a trade school even. Whatever it is they want to do, whatever path is taken. Um, they struggle with tuition. I mean, they struggle with safety with kids going in and out of school. So we have to look at everything from the minute this child leaves the home for the very first time, all the parents are crying. Um, to the last time they leave to go to college and all the parents are crying. Uh, that we need to find a way that makes it easy for them to progress through the educational system with whichever path they take. And also tie it into the city business. It's not, in its fact, the city business is not education, but we can tie together and make it everybody's business.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Um, we're gonna go on, uh, with, uh, Ms. Erin Take. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Oh, no, thank you. Alright, thank you. So I would say, uh, in speaking with some of the parents in my neighborhood. Transparency is a major issue when it comes to education. Uh, I think a lot was revealed in, uh, during the government shutdowns of COVID. Uh, when students were learning at home and parents were surprised at what was being taught. And so I think that, um. As has been said before, given that city council has limited jurisdiction in this area, I think number one is going to be. Educating and empowering parents to know their rights. And be more involved and have more control over their children's education. Um, there are things that parents don't know about, state laws that parents don't know about and actions that they can take. Uh, and it's just a matter of making sure that they know their rights. Uh, I think that our schools need to focus on. Basic principles. Um, just last month, September, we had Constitution Week and by state. And federal law, any school that accepts state or federal funding is supposed to teach. Um, principles on our founding, our declaration and our constitution. And most schools don't know this. Uh, the statistic is that 97% of schools across the country. Don't do it. Um, either they don't know or they don't care. So we need to make sure that we are teaching our kids basic principles. Um, just, just throwing it out there. Do we know how many rights are covered in our First Amendment? And then what are those rights? Uh, if you don't know that, then our schools are failing us. I think that, um, so we need to go back to basics. For universities, uh, and even our local, um. Elementary and, and secondary schools. STEM is, uh, definitely of, an area that needs to have a, a lot of focus. I have seen. Um, some grants that were given to UTEP, uh, recently. So that, that was awesome that were STEM related. So I think that if we can focus on, uh, not only basic principles, but also teaching. You know, the basics of science, technology, engineering and math and, um, you know, giving, not giving, but having students earn those degrees that they'll actually use. Um, I grew up homeschooled. I went to Eastern Washington University. I joined ROTC program through there. I majored in Spanish. And I don't use my degree on a daily basis. Um, it has, I, I definitely am very glad that I can speak the language, but. Um, here in El Paso, the majority of, uh, of folks here do speak English as well. Uh, finally, I think, um, safety is a concern. And with that, uh, I'll finish up. There is a school guardian program that folks are trying to, um. Connect with school districts to do, and I would advocate for that as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Tang. And we're gonna go on with Mrs. Ferris.
Thank you. So as it's been said, the city does not have much jurisdiction over the. School districts here. What we can do is collaborate with the school districts and we have, we have. Contracts in the past, um, putting programs into schools, such as why the after-school programs where we issue grants. Uh, my mom is a principal here, so I have been involved in education and been around the educational scene my entire life. I also sit on the UTEP Alumni Board of Directors and I'm part of. The Campus Partnership Subcommittee. And so what we do. And starting to do, um, new is. Get involved networking with schools and students, getting them engaged, getting them. Uh, exposed to different career paths, having them. Stay local. We're trying to keep our great talent local. And so with UTEP on the university level, we are working to try and, and get more students engaged and get them involved as well as with our alumni that have. Left out of the city to keep them involved as well. So a couple of challenges that I am aware of, one would be our safety. I know many parents have had safety concerns at Tippin, at other schools. Uh, Roberts, you know, had an incident last year. Unfortunately, a child was killed. And so. One way that we can try and work with the school districts is, um. Or that we have is sending our local police to go and monitor, monitor the school zones. They have done that. I've seen them out there and working with the school district police as well. Uh, at my mom's school, they have a dad's program where the dads are involved. And so we need to, um. Get the safety issue addressed as well as the mental health issues that. Students have been exposed to from the pandemic. So working, see if there's city programs that we can initiate to collaborate with the school district. And help our students do, uh, do well in school.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferris. And then finally, Ms. Delarice.
Oh, I am very great. I am very grateful and thankful that both of my parents were educators. My dad was a principal. And he started all the way from the bottom. Uh, my mom was actually a teacher. Um, I don't have any children, but last March, I actually hosted, um, a child from Europe that went to. Um, Franklin High School. And to tell you the true, our education compared to Europe is really, really behind. So some of the challenges that I see are one, our curriculum. Number two, our teachers are totally underpaid. They do not get enough credit. And they are literally taken for granted. On the education side. Uh, we're banning books. We are taking religion out of the school. We're taking history out of the school. And if we forget where we come from as a hu, as humans, we are in a lot of trouble. Also. Safety. Law enforcement officers, they need to regain the trust and the respect from the American people. And the only way that we're gonna do that is with transparency, accountability and justice. We need to clean these departments. We have to provide oversight. And held these directors of these departments accountable. Universities. It's not about quantity. It's about quality. Uh, what I see right now in our universities is that as long as you pay tuition, you are welcome to come to the university. But what type of degree are you getting? I get a lot of, uh, my writers, like my horseback riding parents coming to me. Um, we have discussions. We meet and talk about what's happening in the school. So, uh, again. We have a lot of work to do, even though we don't have jurisdiction, we can. Open lines of communication by networking and collaborating with the school district.
Thank you so much, Ms. Delarice. I'm gonna go ahead and give you about 30 seconds. To, uh, just give a closing statement. I want to thank everybody for being here again. And, um, coming to our forum and we wish you all the best of luck in the coming, um, election. So we're gonna start with, um. We're gonna start with Ms., uh, um, Berrios. Um, Montana's Berrios.
So to make, to make this clear, because a lot of people confuse that. My last name is actually Montañez by my la, my, by my dad. And Berrios is my second last name. I'm actually getting mail. Addressed to Berrios. I mean, it should be to Montañez. And, uh, that needs to be changed. Anyway, um. Go to my social media. I am very transparent. I am on Twitter. I am on Facebook, Instagram. I have a website. My phone number is there. My email is there. If you have any personal concerns, please reach out. I am the best candidate in my humble opinion, but I want the public to get educated and vote. Educated. So please do your duly diligence, just like you do for jury duty. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're gonna go up with Mrs. Annalisa Silverstein.
I was the first to start my campaign in April and I want to finish strong. I want to make sure we're keeping our neighborhoods and our parks safe and fully fund our 2019 public safety bond. We need to continue the economic development and start promoting our, or continue and. To promote our small businesses to keep our economy within El Paso. We need to be fiscally responsible with our taxes and make sure that we are not being wasteful. I want, I've worked in government. I'm experienced and I'm gonna do this full-time and I'm ready to work on day one. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Annalisa. And we're gonna go on to Mr. Brian Kennedy.
Thank you very much. Um, 30 seconds. Wow. Okay. I feel like I'm the most qualified candidate and things do need to change. To say we want to continue what's going on right now means that we want to continue with high taxes and people leaving town. That's what's happening. We have to have somebody who's willing to ask the tough questions, but a belief in solutions. And an experience with diverse streams of potential, high potential revenue like sports tourism. I have a long history of public service. Like I said, some people just want to have the job. I feel I can do the job. I have respect for my constituents and are willing to work with all parties and a commitment to El Paso. ElectBrianKennedy.com is the website. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kennedy. And then we're gonna go on to, um, Ms. Erin Take.
Thank you, uh, once again, very much for the opportunity to be here today. Um, so I believe that God is the ultimate authority and I will be held accountable to him, uh, and. Uh, as well as the citizens of District One. I, I am a kingdom independent first and foremost, and I believe that we need, um. People, principled people in office, not politicians. I am a Patriot Academy Leadership Congress graduate. So even though I may not have as much experience within the system, I do know, uh, what it takes. And I can do what it takes to work within it. Uh, I humbly ask for your vote. I am on social media, uh, on Facebook. And together we can defend truth, proclaim liberty and restore hope for our community.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Tang. And then we're gonna go on. To, um, Mrs. Ferris.
Thank you again for having me here, having us here. We need a strong voice in our government. We need somebody who is willing to represent the constituents, not just special interests, not just big money. We need somebody here with the experience and ha, that has proposed solutions, not just lip service. Nothing has progressed our city recently. We're in the hole. With almost a billion dollars of debt. We need change. I have that experience working for the city, working with nonprofits. I've been a lifelong public servant and I want to continue. To serve the public and be the voice for my constituents. I humbly ask for your vote and your support. Or District One City Council Representative, you can reach out to me on Facebook or my website, electlaurenferris.com. And thank you again for having me here.
Thank you all so much for being here with us. Uh, we truly appreciate you taking the time to come and talk to us. And getting the community, um, some more information and helping us to go, uh. Get the vote out and, and educate ourselves. Um, so our early voting starts next Monday. We hope that you all can get out and go vote. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.